I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven P. M. in the council chambers. So if everyone would take a seat. Thank you very much. Explanation of disaster procedures. If we have a tornado, we go to the basement, and if we have a fire, we go outside and exit through this door. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it is important that everyone speak directly into a microphone when speaking. And we'll start with roll call of the aldermen. Jenny?
Alderperson Whitaker?
Here.
Alderperson Schneider?
Here.
Alderperson Duco?
Here.
Alderperson Aris?
Here.
Alderperson Randall?
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson?
Here.
Alderperson Anthony?
Here.
Alderperson Ovian?
Here.
Alderperson Dittelman?
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Steele?
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler? Alderperson Elmore?
Here.
Alderperson Weigant?
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan?
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff?
Here.
Mayor, all are present. Alderman Rothweiler will be here later.
Thank you, Jenny. Could we do department heads now?
City Treasurer Bierman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Present.
Police Chief Ice Can't?
Here.
Fire Chief Stinson? Finance Director Jamie Maitrait?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith? Director of Library Lee Spearman? Director of I. T. Eric Walls?
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott? Director of Health, Housing and Building Scott Tyler? Director of Economic Development Cliff Cross?
Present.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay? Director of Communications P. R. Kathy Kaiser? Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer?
Here.
Deputy Chief Rumpf is here, and Lee and Scott Tyler excused.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There she is.
She was good.
Well, the sweet little girl that was saying the pledge, you're going to have to come back one night and lead us in the pledge. You were excellent. Okay, public, uh, tonight we have no public hearings, so let's, public participation. If you are here for public participation, two to three minutes per person, please raise your hand and come forward when we call you. Yes. I think he's got something he's...
Sorry for the interruption. I come here dressed in my trash clothes to present to you guys trash. And I wanted to tell you guys my story...
Oh, excuse me, sir. Could you tell your name and, uh, address?
My name is Mike Ogney, and I recently moved over off of Freeburg Avenue across from the Department of Sanitation, about two years ago, I guess now. And about two years ago, I used to believe in recycling, but I no longer do because what I have in this bucket here, this is all from the Department of Sanitation. And this stuff here is all stuff that came out of the recycling. Whenever the recycling gets dumped off in their parking lot, a lot of it makes its way right into the waterways. And I wanted to bring this stuff here to show you guys so you could see it firsthand, because you probably haven't been there to the Department of Sanitation's facility. It's at, uh, twenty-one fifteen Freeburg Avenue. And right about noon, twelve o'clock to twelve-thirty or so, they do this single stream transfer where they dump it from a truck into a trailer and they shove it aboard this Republic Services trailer. And the stuff blows in the wind, it gets all over the place, into my yard, uh, in my neighbor's yards, into the field across the street, which some of that's from the field. But, uh, a lot of it's from the drain where that trailer sits, there's a drain, and underneath there, it just drains right out into this like swamp, this wetland area. And it's just, you know, beautiful little wildlife area, but tons of plastic and debris just floating in there. And eventually that's making its way to Richland Creek and on down the waterways, Mississippi River probably eventually into the Gulf. And, uh, I think it's atrocious. And I see a lot of people here with the, the polystyrene cups, and maybe those will make their way into the recycle, but those aren't even recyclable. Those, those number six cups, like, no one even recycles that. Republic Services, they don't take it. And what you should even know is that this right here is just a drop in the bucket compared to what Republic Services has going on across the river over at fifty-five and Bayless. It's just Belleville times a hundred or more. And it's outside, it pollutes, it goes right into this gravelly creek that's right over there, watershed into the Mississippi River again. So the single stream, it's just terrible. And I don't think anybody really realizes what's going on when they toss their cup into the bin, um, that it's just polluting. It's not actually recycling. It's making people feel good so we can consume more. And I think that people need to know the truth about it, and I'm starting here with our leaders of our community. Um, this is going on all over the country, but, um, we need to make a change here at home and, uh, and do better. And invite you guys to examine the truth of the situation and, uh, you know, work together and we can see what we can do to make this better.
Well, we certainly appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And, uh, I saw some of your pictures, uh, out on the internet. So, um, it's, you know, and, and we have been really trying to clear up Richland Creek because of the flooding that we had in the area this past year. So I appreciate you, Michael, for bringing that to our attention.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I sent you all emails as well, and, uh, I've got a group, sixoneeightlitter, sixoneeightlitter.com. I invite you guys all to check it out on Facebook. We're trying to host cleanup events, make, bring awareness to things like this so that we can make changes and make it better around here.
Okay, thanks so much. Anyone else for public participation? Yes.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunsey with Kaskaski Engineering Group. I'm Vice President of Transportation. I just wanted to make a quick public comment about, um, the streets and grades item that's on your guys' agenda here tonight. Um, as many of you guys know, the Freeburg Avenue Roundabout Project has been started back in two thousand and eleven. It was put on hold in two thousand and fifteen, and then last year was brought to life again. At that time, we submitted, uh, submitted stuff to I. Dot in, in regards to, um, at the direction of City Engineer, Mr. Elliot Elkett, and we, it was sat on, and then in March, uh, April, you guys voted on to cancel our contract. And then recently, after, um, it was found that no other engineering firm was willing to work on it because it was illegal and against their license, that we updated our proposal and resubmitted it. And wanted to make sure that everybody on council was aware of why our proposal was, um, resubmitted. And some of the changes, you know, I. Dot's standards updated, so we have to update everything to the current standards. That takes a lot of time and effort. Um, easements for the construction and everything around there need updated as well. Um, all the permits and environmental documentation that was started back in two thousand and eleven all have to be updated. And then I. Dot actually, um, is now requiring lighting for roundabouts as well. So that's part of that proposal to update. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have as, you know, now's the opportunity since, you know, before the agenda item comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more for public participation? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We have no presentations, recognitions, and appointments this evening. So approval of minutes, I need a motion to approve city council meeting minutes of July third, two thousand and twenty-three, and special council and executive session meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Schneider.
Thank you.
Fair, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under claims, payroll, and disbursements, I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents, and payroll in the amount of one million, seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
Schaefer, someone.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report of May two thousand and twenty-three, and a statement of cash and investments report, May two thousand and twenty-three.
Aris, someone.
Thank you.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Uh, Mr. Dittelman?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion and for the Master Sauer Committee on eleven A., uh, motion to purchase one new two thousand and twenty-two Ford F-one-fifty pickup in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, and one new twenty-two F-three-fifty with snowplow in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars from Marl Brothers Ford using the state purchasing bid program.
Okay, second?
Alderperson Schneider, second.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, uh, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco? Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you very much. And now motions from the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Okay, if I read them all together? Yes. Okay. Eleven B. One, motion to approve Sergeant Kim Folkerson for promotion to Lieutenant effective July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at twelve oh one A. M. Eleven B. Two, motion to approve Master Sergeant Shane Brown for promotion to Lieutenant effective July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at twelve oh one A. M. Eleven B. Three, motion to approve Detective Clayton Green for promotion to Sergeant effective July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at twelve oh one A. M. And eleven B. Four, motion to approve Detective Aaron Sparker for promotion to Sergeant effective July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at twelve oh one A. M. Aris, someone. Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you very much. And if Chief Ice Can't would come up with Assistant Chief Mark Heffernan and the gentleman and woman, gentlewoman that was just promoted, if we could come up and have an introduction. Is Carrie gonna take pictures?
Oh, yeah, she's getting up. You gonna go down there?
All right, it's working now. Hey, I just want to say a few words about all three of these promotions. Um, Lieutenant Folkerson got on the Belleville Police Department in nineteen ninety-four. She has twenty-nine years of service. And, uh, her service to Belleville, she's been a patrol officer, she's been a detective, she was a sergeant in housing, and she was also a sergeant on patrol. And now she will be a commander, um, with this department, um, believe night shift for a little bit, and then, then on the days, or we have to work some things out first, or maybe days, but, uh... Lieutenant, Lieutenant Shane Brown, he, uh, he got on the department in two thousand and six. He has seventeen years on the force. He was in patrol, he went to detectives, he's been a member of the Drug Tactical Unit, he's been an S. R. T. commander, um, he commands our SWAT team. He's been on I. Leas, he's been a housing sergeant. Most recently, he was a task force agent with the United States Marshal Service and a deputy commander with the Major K. Squad. Sergeant Sparker doesn't have a whole lot on his resume yet because he's only been here six years, but, uh, he will get a lot on his resume. He, uh, has been a patrol officer, a detective, and he's also on the Major K. Squad. We have a, a fourth sergeant, um, that got promoted tonight, but he had a family emergency and, um, wasn't able to make it here tonight. But, um, Sergeant Green, he's been on the department for ten years, a patrol officer, detective, and also on the Major K. Squad. These promotions tonight are all well-deserved, and, uh, I wish you guys the best, and I know, uh, our department's gonna be better having you in the positions you're in. Thank you.
We need now motions from administration. So if Jenny would like to begin?
Can I read them all together?
Yes.
Okay. Eleven C. One, motion to approve a contract with Bright Space Studio P. C. in the amount of twenty thousand for the design of exterior modifications to the Kerner House Museum reconstruction of side porch and ADA access D. C. E. O. Grant. Eleven C. Two, motion to extend the special use permit for a liquor license in regards to case number sixty, October twenty-one, Jasmine Brooks, located eighty-two oh one, eighty-two oh five West Main Street, zero seven zero one zero, one one zero zero three seven, until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Eleven C. Three, motion to extend the special use permit for a liquor license and outdoor dining in regards to case zero five, January twenty-two, G. Level and Square, D. B. A. The Harp Pub, located eleven twelve West Main Street, zero eight two one zero, three three two, zero zero three, and zero eight two one zero, three three two, zero zero four, until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Eleven C. Four, motion to waive formal bidding procedures and utilize a source well contract to purchase one H. P. seventy-five heavy-duty aerial ladder fire truck from Banner Fire Equipment for one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars contingent upon city attorney review of purchase contract and subsequent acquisition and approval of financing. Eleven C. Five, motion to approve a facility use agreement with Little Knights Football Club for use of J. C.'s Park, seven fifty West H. Street, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Eleven C. Six, motion to approve a facility use agreement with Belleville Citizens Park Committee Incorporated for use of Citizens Park, three forty-one Citizens Park Drive, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Aris, someone. Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jenny?
On the purchase of, uh, the, uh, ladder truck, uh, which is eleven C. Four, I see that the, uh, the Fire Department Administration has, uh, they recommended the purchase of this, this, this truck. And they, uh, and they actually looked out and, uh, spec that truck out, to know exactly what Belleville was getting for a million, million one.
Okay.
That's a lot of truck.
We actually had, uh, uh, Assistant Chief Larry Russer in the other day, and also our temporary, uh, chief, Mr. Rumpf. And we spoke, uh, about this in, with Garrett, our, uh, city attorney. So is Jamie still in here? Would you like to explain what the situation is on the fire truck? Oh, that would be great. Uh-oh.
Oh, I took it away. I'm sorry.
Ice Can't broke it. No, he didn't.
Mr. Anthony, I only got the first part of your question. Can you repeat that for me?
Uh, my, my, my main concern is that since this, since this, uh, this apparatus did not come through a committee and, you know, committee head out twenty-two to, uh, discuss, you know, with the Fire Department Administration, you know, the specs on the truck, the, uh, the equipment, uh, the, uh, the chassis, the engine, you know, all the stuff that comes with a fire truck. Uh, and I know there is, there's questions lingering within some of the committee members' minds on, on what, what are we getting, uh, did, did it come up, did you guys use some sort of, you know, a, a system to figure out that this would be a good fit for Belleville, and that, that it would meet the specifications and workload that Belleville's gonna put on that, that particular apparatus?
So the truck that it's replacing, it's very similar to that as far as the specification. It's al- almost near identical to the truck that it would be replacing. So that, as far as, you know, a specification that would meet our needs, it is meeting that need because it is similar to what we've already had for the past, uh, ten years or more.
Okay, so, uh, as a department, as, as, uh, chief officer in charge right now, are you recommending the purchase of this, this vehicle?
I am, yes. We did go form a committee within a department, and the committee met, it was chaired up by Battalion Chief Kurt Lozier, who's here with me tonight also. And out of that committee, there was some, many different things discussed, one of which is the lead time to delivery of a fire apparatus once you place an order, and how that lead time just continues to grow. So when we speak to the vendors, we're here in two years, we're here in three years, we're here in four years, out. And every six months that goes by, we're seeing the prices of these, of this apparatus just increase significantly. So the recommendations that came out of the truck committee was to consider a intent to purchase, um, like this here. It was similar to, uh, something that Granite City had also done with this particular vendor. So it's not just us and, and our city that's dealing with this, it's also other cities that are, that are having to deal with their current aging fleet and the lead times up to a delivery of a new apparatus that just continue to grow.
Okay, chief. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I have a question.
Lily?
Yes, um, I'm a little concerned about the way this has been purchased. Um, there should have been a committee. Um, and what's the rating of this truck? What's, you know, how they rate other stuff? And we haven't had a fire chief, you know, a permanent fire chief. And when we get one coming in, don't you think that one would shouldn't need to know what was done and how it was done? I mean, if it wasn't even brought to police and fire committee, isn't this something that's being just rushed through? I, I'm very disappointed the way this is being done. It's just not right. Um, like I said, the rating of the fire truck, is it what we really would if we made it custom? Because we always get custom fire trucks. We just don't take anything sitting on the lot. So... Can you tell me the rating of this fire truck? What's the problems and stuff like that with it?
Well, it wouldn't meet N. F. P. A. Complacency, just like any other fire apparatus that's out there on the market that we would purchase. Even if we went through a custom design, it would still be an N. F. P. A. compliant truck.
But it wasn't brought to police and fire committee?
The motion originated in the administration.
So I, I can speak to that. When we met last week, when you discussed how the first truck that was ordered, uh, was no longer available, there was concern that this truck was likewise not gonna be available. So I had suggested taking it directly to council, subject to my approval of an agreement when it comes. But also, uh, it would come back through the committee for services of the financing. But we just wanted to, to inform the council and get that consensus so we could obtain a commitment on this vehicle so as to avoid losing it and potentially waiting, uh, years to have that opportunity again.
This basically is a letter of intent. Yes.
I have a lot of questions about what you're purchasing. I have a question more about, are we retiring the truck, or we can hold on to it for a while until the student is ready to go? What's the game plan for the one that's being removed if it's being removed?
Well, our current situation for our fleet is that the, the ladder twelve ninety-nine is off at Banner being refurbished. And we expect that back hopefully sometime in December or January. But at the same time, the truck that is at Station Two is also aging. And it is past its tenure mark for, for its frontline, um, you know, recommended usage. But the truck that's at Station Four is, has some, uh, serious, um, rust and rail damage that is, the decision is gonna have to be made in the future of whether or not that truck is repaired or is not repaired and, and sold then. So this here would help fill in that gap of the timing of the, you know, replacement of the apparatus that we're behind the eight ball on.
It allows us to be able to get the one we have currently repaired and refurbished.
Yes.
That makes perfect sense. The longer you wait, the more expensive this is gonna be.
Yes, we're seeing...
And that was one reason why it was bought, because of the fact that it could be years before we would get a, a new fire truck, uh, because these are specialty-built.
And it'll just be more money.
And it would be a lot more money.
Mayor?
Yes.
In the, uh, in the committee meeting, we had discussed, uh, you know, the condition of the, uh, the, the ladder truck that we were actually using as frontline piece of equipment. And, um, you know, we, there was a lot of, there's a lot of concerns about that truck. Matter of fact, there was a rumor that we didn't have a truck, that half the stuff on the truck wasn't working. Uh, and consequently, you know, I know that we need this, this, this apparatus, uh, to, uh, you know, to actually order it, get it built, would take about three or four years. And that's, that's, you know, and that's the time now. And probably, you know, the cost is gonna go up. You could end up paying, you know, a million six, million seven for the same type of equipment in the, in, in a few years. So, uh, my main concern was that, uh, Truck Committee was formed, and that, that committee looked at this, this apparatus and found that it would meet the needs of Belleville, and that we weren't buying something that was gonna end up out of service. I have a lot of issues that, that, that we have to deal with. It has a seven-year, uh, warranty on it, and, uh, it's, uh, this, this seventy-five-foot ladder has, uh, I think a five-hundred-gallon tank. And, uh, I think that, uh, you know, other than the, uh, the, 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 uh, I think that the chassis that we, we really hadn't heard of, but, uh, you know, Metro Star, I was told is a, uh, is a, what was the name of that thing?
Spartan.
Is a Spartan chassis, actually. Uh, we hadn't heard of, uh, Metro Star before. So if you guys have met, and Truck Committee is, uh, you know, that's, that's normally a procedure anyway, you know, even though it comes before the committee. Committee, uh, a, a, a bunch of, uh, stuff, most of us don't know anything about the fire trucks anyway. We're gonna take the same word of these same people if we were sitting in committee meeting on this, on this apparatus. And, uh, so there is, therein lies that, you know, if there's some concern about that, I think I feel, now I feel... I think, I feel, I feel that, that we can go with, with the uh, truck committee's recommendation and, and uh, you know, and go ahead and purchase this, this, this apparatus, if, if the council agrees.
I personally would like to see the, the fire trucks and all of our equipment uh, be cleaned and dried down and everything after every usage. And I think maybe we would get some more time out of the trucks that we have in our fleet, not just in the fire department, but in other aspects of departments that we have. Yes, Dennis?
I think another thing to do is, a new truck, we get it undercoated when we get it. I think it's safe on getting it all rusted out underneath and that. It's not that much expense to get them undercoated. And I think, put on the truck for a long period of time, from rust come forming, and I recommend that if you think that's valuable. We get done.
Any more discussion? Okay. Hearing, no discussion. Roll call.
I just wanna make one comment. Item eleven C two, where we have gone ahead and extended the special use permit to December thirty-first, dismissed the second one. And as I was talking to Clifford tonight, this'll be the last one. I wanna make sure that the owner of the business is aware of that, that that's all we can do. Thank you.
And would that also apply to eleven C three? So both eleven C two.
Eleven C two.
And then also eleven C three? And they're both until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, are we good for roll? Okay. Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Oh, Rothweiler.
Aye.
I had already crossed you out. I'm so sorry.
I did cross off.
I'm sorry. And Alderman Rothweiler was here at uh, like seven fifteen, for the record. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Now from Alder Person, Mr. Dittelman.
If nobody minds, I'd like to read uh, eleven D and eleven D two together if I can.
Please.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the Planning Commission, on eleven D Farm Fresh uh, site plan, approval for the construction of an approximate nine-hundred square foot addition to the rear of the existing twenty-four-hundred square foot building at the property commonly known as eighteen oh five North Belt West. The lot is approximately thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine square foot and located within a C two heavy commercial district parcel zero eight dash zero eight dash four one five dash zero zero seven, Ward Three. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of seven to zero. That was eleven D one and eleven D two. Ashland Storage Center East. Site plan approval for the construction of an approximate thirty-seven hundred square foot boat and RV storage building at the existing Ashland Storage Facility at the property commonly known as six by three Corlao Avenue. The lot is approximately one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two square feet and houses two separate buildings that total approximately uh, fifty-three thousand square feet. The lot is located within a C two heavy commercial district parcel zero eight dash two three dash zero dash three dash zero two zero, Ward Seven. The Planning Commission also recommended approval with the stipulation that the chairman, Kurt's uh, comments are considered and said, site plans will be subject to departmental administrative review and approval with a vote of seven to zero. So what, what happened there is our guy wasn't there, our chairman. So we went ahead and did this, but he wanted to be known and he wanted to put his two cents forward. So he wrote something up, and we decided that, yes, we would do that. So that's what we're talking about here. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, motion?
So that's the motion.
Shaffer second? Discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now we need motions from Streets and Grades. Uh, Mr. Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, folks, on behalf of the Streets and Grades Committee, uh, I'm going to postpone any action on eleven E one until after we return from executive session and go ahead and read motion eleven E two. Motion to approve an agreement with TWM in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars for additional street repairs to be added to the Lincolnshire Contract, East Adams from Forest Avenue to Portland Avenue, East Grant from Wabash to Portland Avenue, Wabash from East Grant to McClintock, South Douglas from Olive to McKinley, South Douglas from Curry to McClintock, Grand Avenue from East Main to North Douglas, the use of ARPA funds. So move.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco? Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. In no, um...
Communications?
Executive session.
Well, executive session's at the end.
We had talked about doing it. Do you wanna do it now, or do you wanna do it at the end? Okay, got it. Okay, we will move on to Jenny with communications.
Can I read them together, right? Okay. Twelve A, Belleville Main Street Marathon banners. Request from Belleville Main Street Marathon to place ten streetlight banners September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through October second, twenty twenty-three along Main Street. Twelve B, Movie in the Park, seven twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Request from Your Faithful Hands to host Movie in the Park, Monday, July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, seven PM to ten thirty PM, use of Huff Park Electric and Restrooms. Twelve C, Lexi's Customer Appreciation Day, eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Request from Lexi's BFF to host Customer Appreciation Day, Saturday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, eight AM to one AM, eight twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Street closure, closure of two parking stalls adjacent to one twenty-six East Main Street bumpout. Additional services, barricades and no parking signage. Twelve D, NPHC Cookout, eight nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Request from Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity to host the NPHC Cookout, Saturday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, eleven AM to seven PM at Goss Park, one ten North Ten. Additional services, picnic tables and trash toters. Twelve E, Blessed Sacrament Parish Picnic, eight nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Request from Blessed Sacrament to host their parish picnic, Saturday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Four PM to eleven fifty-nine PM, additional services, barricades and picnic tables. Twelve F, fingerprinting background checks, eight five, twenty twenty-three. Request from Bright Point to host a fingerprinting background check event for families. Saturday, August fifth, twenty twenty-three, ten AM to two PM. Use of city parking lot spaces at the building, one twenty East A Street. Additional services, barricades. Twelve G, West Haven Estates Block Party, eight five, twenty twenty-three. Request from Octavia Wade to host a West Haven Estates Block Party, Saturday, August fifth, twenty twenty-three, ten thirty AM to two thirty PM. Street closure, end of Rosemary Drive in Claussen, ten AM to three PM. Additional services, toters and picnic tables.
Aris, so move.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, motions carry. We have no petitions this evening and no resolutions. So I'd like a motion to read by title only, ordinances nine, ninety-one seventy-six and ninety-one seventy-seven.
Schneider.
Thank you.
Shaffer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of reading those together?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Jenny?
Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-one seventy-six, twenty twenty-three, zoning ordinance in regards to case number sixty, October twenty-one, Jasmine Brooks. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-three, zoning ordinance in regards to case number five, January twenty-two, G Level and Square, DBA The Heart Pub.
Aris, so moved. Shaffer second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no unfinished business this evening. Uh, under miscellaneous and new business, I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Shaffer second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss uh, personnel litigation, workers compensation, property acquisition, transfer of property. Uh, five I L C S one twenty slash two C.
Aris, so move.
Two C eleven.
Two C eleven, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Randall and I'm, I didn't see any of that.
Aris.
Aris. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. If everyone else could leave the room, do...
Under five thousand, five hundred and five dollars for the completion of plans for Freeburg Avenue Roundabout by updating plans, updating easements, refile for expired permits and design lighting as required by ADA, tip three funding. So move.
Aris, second.
Okay. I forgot if we're all in favor. No, it's a roll call. Is there any more, any discussion?
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steel?
No.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
No.
Whitaker?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Aris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
The eyes have it eleven to five. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, yep.
Aris, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.